We will call to order the regular city council meeting for the city of Grandview Heights, Ohio on Monday, November 10th, 2025. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Houston?
Here.
Kozak?
Here.
Panzera?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Weiss?
Here.
President Keeler?
Here.
Mayor Kearns?
Here.
Director Maxwell?
Here.
City Attorney Cousin?
Here.
Director Miller?
Here.
All here. Thank you. Next, we have the approval proceedings for the October 13th regular city council meeting. Is there any discussion? Motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you. That's a motion by Councilmember Weiss. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kozak. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright. It's been approved. I need this whole big table to myself. Next, we have comments from...well, that just got real loud. Sorry, I'll speak into the microphone a little bit better here. Next, we have a presentation from Start Talking Grandview. Ms. Hada, if you'd like to come to the podium.
Good evening. Do I need to state my name and address and all that?
You can just say your name.
Okay. My name's Megan Hada, and I am a resident here in Grandview. And tonight, I'm here as a representative of Start Talking Grandview, along with fellow team members and student representatives from the Student Advisory Group. And I just want to thank all council members for your service to our community, and to President Keeler and Mayor Kearns for the invitation to come tonight and share an update on Start Talking Grandview programs and initiatives. History of Start Talking Grandview, if you're not familiar, we are a nonprofit, volunteer-led community group. Our mission is to engage our community in respectful, informed conversations around substance misuse and its impacts. We formed over 10 years ago in response to a call to action from Governor Kasich at the time, had launched a statewide initiative called Start Talking Ohio, and its purpose was for local communities, all communities, to form local coalitions, to raise awareness and begin conversations that met local, you know, unique local needs. And it was specifically launched in response to the opioid epidemic and unprecedented overdose rates. When Grandview stakeholders gathered in response to this call to action and surveyed the community, we heard that our community wanted education on all substances, including opiates, but also including legal substances and all substances. Furthermore, there was a desire for a better understanding about addiction and how to support others, either directly or indirectly. And with that information, Start Talking Grandview was formed, and with the goal to build a culture of understanding, empathy, and prevention here in Grandview and Marble Cliff. Our first event was focused on opioids and prescription misuse, but since then, we've hosted 21 speaker and panel events covering topics such as vaping, alcohol, marijuana, anxiety, mental health, social media, screen addiction. And if you're not, if you don't know, next week is our next speaker event. It's on Tuesday, November 18th, which I know is the ribbon-cutting ceremony. But it's at 6:15 in partnership with Grandview Heights Public Library, and it's a program titled Stress, Trauma, and the Ways We Cope. And we're going to have a fantastic panel, so invite you to join us if you're able. We have participated in 42 community outreach events, events such as National Night Out and Senior Luncheon Learns hosted with Parks and Rec. We've participated in 60 school engagements, from Day of Service Learning Activities to Drug and Alcohol Fact Week. And we're very proud of how we've grown and the trusted partner we've become with our schools, our families, and our neighbors. And we're excited for continued growth. Our funding comes from community donations and grants. We are honored to have received $12,234 in grant funding over the 10 years. And I want to especially recognize Mumu Carwash on Fifth Avenue. They have generously contributed nearly $6,000 to support Start Talking Grandview. And this, their contributions largely help support our student scholarship fund, which is a $1,000 annual scholarship to a graduating senior. So, very grateful for that local partnership. We rely on grants and community partnerships to broaden our reach and to support more student-led, driven ideas. We know that prevention is most powerful when young voices are at the center. And the students that we've had the privilege to work with through Grandview Heights High School have truly helped direct conversation and programming in ways that are current and relatable to peers and families. And our fundraising is directed largely to help support the prevention efforts led by our students. And again, I want to just recognize students joined us tonight because of their active role in the Red Ribbon Week. And I just want to recognize and thank them because there is a student's energy and insight that really inspires us as adults and families to keep talking and continue this, our mission. In closing, I do want to share that occasionally, we'll have folks come to us and say, you know, does, we appreciate what you do, but does Grandview really have a drug and alcohol problem? And I say this sincerely, and I believe this, that everything that Start Talking Grandview does is driven with the belief that if there is one student, one family, or one neighbor that is struggling, then we have a problem that is worth addressing together as a community. On behalf of Start Talking Grandview, I do want to, again, express our gratitude for your ongoing support. We look forward to continuing our partnership with the city and providing events and initiatives that help connect students, parents, and the general community in informed and meaningful conversations about substance use and its impacts. Any questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Hada?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you so much for the update. We appreciate that and all the work that you all do. But don't go too far, because next, we have the recognition resolution. It's a resolution recognizing November 10th through 16th, 2025, as Red Ribbon Week in the city of Grandview Heights. Is there any discussion? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you. That's a motion by Councilmember Smith.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Houston. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright. If all the folks from Start Talking Grandview would like to come join me up front, and Mayor Kearns, if you'd like to join us. Everyone, have you all come this size here? This little bit over here. Alright. And then you can all turn around. You are our guests of honor. You can come to the front.
I love it. Such modest people. I just want to go ahead and read the resolution real quickly, so we can kind of recognize what Red Ribbon Week is. Whereas alcohol and drug abuse affects individuals, families, and communities, not only in Grandview Heights, but across the nation. And whereas it is imperative that visible unified efforts by community members be launched to prevent drug abuse and misuse. And whereas Red Ribbon Week is an alcohol, tobacco, smoking, and drug and violence prevention awareness campaign observed annually in October in the United States, it began as a tribute to fallen DEA Special Agent Enrique Camanera in 1985. And whereas, Red Ribbon Week offers citizens the opportunity to visibly demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles by displaying red ribbons, planting red flower bulbs, or doing other activities that serve to visibly remind others of the importance of this goal. And whereas, National Red Ribbon Week, the nation's oldest and largest drug prevention awareness campaign, has celebrated in communities across the nation on October 23rd through 31st. And whereas, during Red Ribbon Week, businesses, government, law enforcement, media, healthcare providers, religious institutions, schools, and other community-based organizations are encouraged to demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyles by wearing red ribbons and participating in other drug prevention activities and conversations. And whereas, the community of Grandview Heights supports the efforts of Start Talking Grandview and similar community resources designed to ensure the success of Red Ribbon Week and its goals. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Grandview Heights, State of Ohio, County of Franklin, that Section 1, the city does hereby proclaim November 10th through 16th as Red Ribbon Week. In Section 2, the council encourages residents to participate in drug prevention education activities, not only during Red Ribbon Week, but also throughout the year, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free lifestyle. So, thank you all for all the work that you do, especially the students. This is wonderful, so thank you so much. We appreciate you. And don't run away, because we got to get a picture, so.
Do I have your cell phone number? Alright, so thank you very much again, Start Talking Grandview. We appreciate you. You are welcome to stay if you want, but of course, we know you have other things to do, so don't feel like you need to stick around, so. Alright, next, we have comments from visitors. Are there any, I have no forms. Is there anyone who needs to speak? Nope. Alright. Clerk, if you could please read the name and the subject of all of our online comments we received?
Okay. First one is Jonah Schneider, 1295 Inglis Avenue, Grandview Heights. Subject of comments, new use for old fire/pd/government building. Second one, Michael Cullen, 1336 Lincoln Road, Grandview Heights. The subject, rec desk purge of all residents is not an audit and overly burdensome on residents.
Great. Thank you very much. Alright, next, we have council committee reports. Finance?
No report.
Planning Administration? Thank you. Recreation Services and Public Facilities?
No report.
Safety?
No meeting and no report.
Thank you. Council Liaison Reports, Grandview Library.
Well, it's that time of the year again. I actually probably have to do this. It's the food drive with the library, and they're holding the food drive from November 17th until December 14th. Non-perishable items in non-glass containers can be donated in the designated bin inside the library. A quick list of the top needed items are chili with beans, canned fruit and juice, or light syrup, tuna, canned vegetables, canned meat, soup with vegetables, and peanut butter. And actually, to, although they all just left, to add on to our guests, on the second, I've got a little bit more details about, the second item, sorry, more details about what their event is. Start Talking Grandview on November 18th will host a community conversation in the library from 6:15 to 7:30, and it's actually entitled, "Understanding Stress, Trauma, and the Ways We Cope." In the panel discussion, we'll have three guest panel speakers, which is Dr. Erin McKnight from Nationwide Children's Hospital, Kenneth Jaeger, director of the STAR Program at the Ohio State University, and Bob Miller, a Grandview parent, sharing their experience about trauma and loss. And then, the last thing to mention is, it's the 35th Annual Indoor Concert Series at the library this winter. And James Michael Meadows will be performing original songs on acoustic guitar in the library atrium, sorry, can't talk, November 20th, from 6:30 to 7:30. On December 1st, the Grandview Singers from Grandview Heights High School will perform their holiday show under the direction of Andrew Greger from 7:00 to 7:30. And last but not least, an acapella women's chorus, The Sweet Ada Lines, will perform in four-part harmony, barbershop style, from 6:30 to 7:30. And that's it.
Great. Thank you very much. Moving on, the schools. A, tomorrow's Veterans Day, so just a reminder that. But also, congratulations to the girls' cross-country team that placed fifth in the Division IV Cross Country. And this was their best finish since 1970, so go Grandview girls. Alright, next, we have chamber.
I attended the development download on October 29th and heard from community members from Arlington, Marble Cliff, and Grandview. Mayor Kearns mentioned that we have the new business Face Forward aesthetics that's coming into the Eddington. They put the sign up, so you've probably seen that. And then, Jamie Gentry spoke about the new linear park that's, they're planning for Marble Cliff in the boulevard along Cambridge, and they're waiting on an OPWC grant to see if that comes through. And then, this Friday, November 14th, is the member appreciation luncheon at the Bob Crane Center in UA. Our dedication and ribbon cutting for our new municipal building is on their event schedule. Next Tuesday, November 18th, it's from 4:00 to 7:00, and the ribbon cutting is scheduled for 4:15. And the annual holiday luncheon is Wednesday, December 10th, at Sayota Country Club. And you can register for all these events on their website. And that's all I have.
Great. Thank you. Planning Commission?
Regrettably, I was not able to attend October's meeting, but Chair Gentry is here, and I don't know if he would care to speak, or I'll defer to the mayor.
The biggest thing that was done at that meeting was to approve the school's temporary trailer plan for this site. 29 trailers will be rolling in in February, and it's going to be quite a, quite a development for one school year. But we're pleased for the partnership. We're working through a right-of-entry agreement for the square of parkland that we have there to allow them to most efficiently and most safely assemble those trailers. And we look forward to the project being complete.
Great. Thank you. Coda?
No report this time.
Alright, next, we have Morpsy. The biggest thing is, I sent a memo Friday, I believe it was, with an update regarding the Regional Sustainability Agenda, and you'll see the hard copy that you all have here today. So, in the memo, I went through all of the different goals and highlighted some of the projects that we do here in Grandview Heights that are already meeting the Regional Sustainability Agenda. We have quite a few more than what I put in the memo, but I just wanted to highlight some of them. Additionally, Director Maxwell also sent out the, what's it called, Sustainable Practices Report, which you also have this evening. So, just really highlighting some of the stuff we're doing. It also shows some opportunities that we have to continue in the sustainability world. It's something, it's not something you do once, it's something you continually do. And so, I wanted to highlight that, the agenda being finalized and published, as well as how Grandview Heights is meeting those goals. Alright, next, we have Destination Grandview.
There has not been a meeting since the last time we met, but I do see that we have the Visitors Guide, which is finally completed, and this was a longstanding project for Destination Grandview. If you wouldn't know this without going to the meetings, but this very last page, which is pretty cool, this Get Social, this was a last-minute addition. For years, our Visitors Guide has had to pull out math in the middle, and that idea got scrapped because, lots of reasons. But this Get Social, Destination Grandview was able to collaborate with local influencers that were willing to send along a photo that they had taken of local Grandview area restaurants, businesses, parks, and put it on the last page. So, it was pretty cool. Nice refresh.
I love that. And all of the places that are pictured here.
I'm hungry, so.
Me too.
Thank you. Alright, next, Area Reports. Mayor Kearns?
Thank you, Madam President. Tomorrow's Veterans Day, thanks to all of our veterans and active military for their service to the country. It's a practical matter for the city. It's just a reminder that trash and recycling is delayed by one day this week, and Friday's pickup moves to Monday. Yard waste is ongoing, continues through November 24th, Thanksgiving Week. Also, through Thanksgiving Week, but a little later, the 28th is pumpkin recycling, which is pretty active already at Wallace Gardens. Leaf pickup continues, expected through mid-December, kind of a late year, but they're starting to come down. And food, we do food waste all the time. We have the drop-off. We thank SUECO for their partnership, and there is an investment now in new signage for that facility, so we're grateful for that. And my final note that I wanted to make is our city paving, our asphalt and concrete, including sidewalks, project for the year is done. Pleased about that. Not done yet is going to be gas paving, and we just got notice, actually, late in the day, or I just got notice late in the day. We will be putting out what we know, but because it's not our project, we don't control everything, but we believe they will be paving Thursday and Friday, milling and paving on Parkway North, West Second, Oxley, Eastview, and Virginia. Again, we will put this out once it's verified. That's the director to follow up on several other items here.
Thank you. Any questions for Mayor Kearns? Alright, moving on, Director of Administration, Director Maxwell?
Alright, thank you. So, an update on the building project. So, we're, everyone's in the building. We've been in for several weeks now, which is exciting. We're all under one roof again, and we have some punchless work that's been ongoing, so we still have contractors and subcontractors in and out of the building. And for the foreseeable future, that'll be the case, but things are coming along nicely. Some of the major items that are still in progress are the solar arrays on the carports for the Police Division, but that's nearing completion. Landscaping as well, which Parks is helping to coordinate. The public parking lot out front was just turned over to us. I know for a while, it looked like it was ours, but it just got turned over by the contractor for our use, which was a big milestone, so that we can move closer to having these meetings in council chambers. So, that was exciting, that that's been completed. The mayor mentioned the food waste program. We've tidied up the collection site, and again, partnered with SUECO on some publications for the residents and promoting that. And that'll be nice and tidy for folks if they come to the dedication and they want to see that for the first time. And we're doing some fine-tuning of the AV system in council chambers with the goal of having your first meeting December 1st, which would be the first public meeting in there, and then BZA, Planning Commission, and civil service would follow. A lot of mention's been made of the dedication. Again, Tuesday, November 18th, from 4:00 to 7:00 o'clock. City Council's invited for a photo shoot at 3:30 with a group shot and with some dignitaries. The ribbon cutting will occur after that. Comments. There's a time capsule for those in the community that would like to commemorate something for opening 50 years down the road. And we're also going to have open house tours and departments displaying information relating to their operations. So, it should be an exciting time, 4:00 to 7:00 o'clock on November 18th. And then, a couple last items. The sustainability report was mentioned by Council President Keeler. If you have any questions on that, let staff know. We were glad to showcase all of the good things that are going on, and we recognize there's always more to do, but quite a bit has been accomplished and is ongoing with the staff team. And then, finally, you'll see legislation before the end of the year as it relates to updating our cybersecurity program. The state put in place requirements for all political subdivisions to have a plan. Of course, we had one in place, but we'll, we're in the process of updating that to meet state requirements, and we'll be bringing that to you for consideration prior to the end of the year. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for the director? Alright, moving on. Director Patterson, Parks and Recreation.
Thank you for having me here tonight. Finished up a very busy event season, and October quietly is one of, actually, our busiest. Number of events happened during that month. Fall Fest added an event in partnership with the library, Things That Go, called Touch a Truck, if you'd like. But Marathon Pumpkin Run, and then the Halloween events. So, very busy event month, thanks to all staff who helped. Chief Starnes over there, his group helps a lot with those events, and then anyone who attended. We just had our 46th Annual Pumpkin Run, so, cool to keep that tradition going. Working on transitioning from fall to winter programs, getting ready for holiday events, and closing up all the outdoor things in the parks and getting ready for the winter. It showed up this morning, apparently. So, Taylor Pierce was recently hired as a recreation programmer and started on October 27th, and she'll be working with the Young Kiddos. So, happy to have Taylor on board. We now have two Taylors. So, but you'll be meeting Taylor Pierce here soon, if you haven't already. I did want to take a moment to recognize the Parks team, especially Andy Grau and Chad Dalton, and the rest of the team. They've really worked extremely hard behind the scenes to make the move-in at City Hall much easier for staff. They've been cleaning, hanging pictures, moving things around, troubleshooting, and all that, and I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize that team. On top of all the fall duties they do, you know, they're picking up a lot of slack at the new building, so I want to make sure they get recognized. Big thing administratively coming up, there is a Parks Master Plan RFP out. Submissions are due Friday, so looking forward to later this next month, working with the team, selecting a consultant, and onboarding that consultant sometime early January. And as we have moved into McKinley, we finished our Parks Master Plan from 2007. That was kind of the last piece. So, we've got renovations of Pierce Wyman, a brand-new pool, and a new home for Parks and Rec out of that vision and that planning. So, it's exciting to take a new look at the park system and go through that process again and see what the future holds. So, with that, let's have, any questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions for the director? No? Moving on, Director of Finance? Director Miller?
Well, we've been spending a lot of time on the budget, which you all received via email, and I provided printed copies today. Also, in my report, I included information about property tax reform. There are a lot of bills out there. There are three primary bills that impact the city. The first one is House Bill 309. It has passed this House and is currently in Senate Committee. This bill expands the county budget commission's authority to modify levies and reduce millage. So, if they chose, if an entity was showing that maybe they had too much money, the county, this would give the county budget commission the authority to reduce any of those levies. The second one is House Bill 335, also passed by the House, currently in Senate Committee. This bill caps the growth of inside millage by again allowing the county budget commission to limit increases to the GDP deflator growth over three preceding years. So, basically, both of these bills are giving the county budget commission a lot of power over the amount of property taxes that are collected. Then, the third one is House Bill 355. It is currently in House Committee, and this bill would increase the vote threshold to 60% for all local taxes subject to voter approval. There are quite a few other property tax bills out there that really impact school districts and other entities more than the city, but these are the three that are impacting, that would impact us the most. There's also a House Bill out there, House Bill 503, which relates to municipal income taxes. This would require voter approval of any changes in the reciprocity credit. Currently, the city, we give full credit, but this- Currently, the city, we give full credit, but this bill, and council has the authority to change that without going to the voters. If this bill passes, then voter approval would be required for any reciprocity changes. So, those are four bills that we're watching very closely right now. And that's all I have right now. We're going to do lots of budget discussion over the next month, so.
I have a question about House Bill 503. What we have currently on the books would stay on the books, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. This would just be changes in the future, and it would also allow for residents to do a referendum and make change, request changes, or put it on the ballot to change reciprocity credits. So, the entities that don't get full credit are the ones that are concerned most. How it affects us is it just takes a tool out of our toolbox. If something happened and council did decide they wanted to reduce the credit right now, you could do that. If this bill passes, you could not.
Unless the voters wanted to do that?
Correct.
Okay. Very good. Are there any questions for, yes, Councilmember Smith?
It's also worth noting that it was in 2015, it was effective in 2017, we gave the full credit.
Correct.
But, I read your report, but I was a little unclear on, I think it's House Bill 309 capping the millage, would it be capped at 10, the inside millage, or 10 mills, or what? What does it actually do, what's the cap at?
It would cap, it would allow the budget commission to modify levies, inside millage or outside millage, I think.
Not that one, the other one, there was a.
House Bill 335.
335.
Three, okay, okay.
Oh, it would cap the growth of inside millage. So, right now, inside millage is the only millage that grows for us. The voted millage does not. So, it would cap how much? So, every three years or six years, when properties are reappraised or reevaluated, it'll go up. It would limit the amount of growth that we could see from that increase in value.
Is there a specific percentage that it could grow?
That's where it goes, it would limit it to the GDP deflator growth over the three preceding years. So, I'm not sure exactly what that is, but I could Google it.
That's what Google's for, right?
I have a question.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
Councilmember Panzer.
Oh, that's okay. The House Bill 309, I think the first one you mentioned?
Yes.
The budget committee for the county has discretion over what factors are in play for them to determine whether a municipality has sufficient funding? Are they talking about reserves? Are they talking about future funding and development that's online, that's coming online? I mean, that's an extremely complicated formula to try and enact through a single piece of legislation, because there's just, there's moving parts every day.
I assume that it would be based on, so when we submit our tax budget every June or July, they get that, and then the amounts and rates are set based on your tax budget. So, I am thinking what they would be looking at is reserves and fund balances, just to see, and there's been a lot of discussion with all of the property tax reform on how much should reserves be. At one point, there was something out there that said, if it's over 30%, then we're going to reduce your millage. They've now said, the Ohio Property Tax Working Group said, well, 100% reserves. So, I think that it's kind of in flux right now, but I'm thinking what they're going to look at, you know, the county budget commission gets your tax budget. I think that's what they'll be looking at to see, like, where are your fund balances, and how much money are you collecting in property taxes?
And the measure that could potentially require 60% vote to pursue a levy, taking a wild guess that that only takes 50% to pass the new 60% requirement? I'm just looking for the logic. Just had to throw that out there for sake of humor and just the absence of, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the director? No? All right, moving on. Director Kuzam, City Attorney.
I submitted my report, excuse me, and would be happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the director? Moving on, old business, there is none. New business, we're going to jump down to new item number three, so our guest does not have to stay all evening. Clerk, if you could please read item number three.
Resolution 35-2025, a resolution authorizing an amendment to the Fourth Amendment to Joint Economic Development Zone, JEDZ, income tax agreement by and between the City of Grandview Heights, Ohio, and the Board of Directors of Clinton, Grandview Heights, JEDZ, and approving amendments to enable the JEDZ to enter into economic development agreements with businesses desiring to operate or expand within the JEDZ.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker or Director Miller, would you like to speak on this legislation?
Thank you, I have.
Sorry.
Still not used to this. I have a few points. As the City Council rep on the Clinton Township Grandview Heights, JEDZ Board, I wanted to talk about a few quick things. Sorry, readers. There was a one-page document that was sent to you along with the language with the resolution in the packet, and that was created from Jamie, Jamie Gentry, and he was contracted, actually, from the JEDZ Board to assist with our outreach and economic development work from the JEDZ Board to try to increase more participation and hopefully build more revenue there. So, the creation of an income tax credit program can increase, the main goal would be to increase job creation in the JEDZ areas of Clinton Township. And this amendment, this proposed amendment to our current JEDZ agreement with Clinton Township would enable the JEDZ, for the opportunity to offer payroll tax incentives similar to those offered by other municipalities, including the City of Columbus. And this kind of just helps create a better opportunity for the JEDZ, and it kind of puts economic development projects more of a level playing field with us and other municipalities. Any incentive offers would be negotiated and voted by the JEDZ Board, and the incentive will help to increase JEDZ revenue by making the area more competitive for future economic development projects. And then, if there's any specific questions, Jamie can take you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Either Director Miller or Mr. Gentry, do you have anything to add?
No, and I don't think they add. I think Councilmember Walker succinctly, I mean, we got all the points out there. It really is just adding another tool to the toolbox, you know, as we're trying to attract growth to that JEDZ area. I think there's a lot of opportunity, especially with, there are some entities and companies currently in the JEDZ that have locations in other municipalities in the region. It would allow us to go to those entities and say, we can give you just as good a deal to stay and grow here. But ultimately, the reason for this amendment is to help us grow JEDZ revenue.
Great, thank you. And just to be clear, I believe the JEDZ has passed it, and the township has it on their next agenda, correct?
That's correct.
All right. So, we are just one piece in this lovely puzzle. Great, thank you. Are there any discussion or questions for Mr. Gentry while he's here, or for Councilmember Walker? Any thoughts? No?
Briefly, just for, so this effectively delivers parody to.
Mr. Gentry, would you like to take the microphone so we can hear you?
Absolutely. Sure. Delivers parody to the JEDZ entities that is presently being enjoyed and privileged by the local municipalities throughout Ohio.
Well, nothing would actually be enacted. It just creates the program, and it will allow us to then negotiate.
Understood.
Specific deals.
So, it's been a handicap for them.
Yes.
In the past, and it has effectively not driven away development, but it's been for larger organizations or businesses that wish to expand and take advantage of the statutory tax credits that are available or incentive programs that are available. They have been effectively blocked out of the JEDZ regions and townships that are engaged in those JEDs.
So, more advantageous for them to look elsewhere.
Yeah, thank you.
Great, thank you. And this is a resolution, and I believe there is a need to pass it this evening, correct?
Move to approve.
Sorry. Director Miller, hold on. Director Miller or Director Kuzam, there is a need?
We should move ahead with it. I mean, I don't know that there's any reason not to, because it's going to come up on, excuse me, the township's next agenda.
Great, thank you. That was a motion by Councilmember Panzer and a second by Councilmember Smith. Right? Did I hear that right? Okay. Thank you. Is there any discussion? No? Clerk, please call the roll.
Kozak?
Yes.
Panzer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Houston?
Yes.
President Keeler?
Yes.
Resolution 35-2025 is approved.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gentry, for coming this evening. We appreciate your expertise and willing to discuss this with us this evening, so. All right, now, going back to new business, item number one.
Resolution 33-2025, a resolution accepting a donated ballistic canine vest from vested interests in canines.
Thank you. Mayor Kearns.
Hank's getting a ballistic vest. I don't have much more to add, only that we request that the dollars be accepted.
Move to approve.
Thank you. That's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Weiss. Clerk, please call the roll.
Panzer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Houston?
Yes.
Kozak?
Yes.
President Keeler?
Yes.
Resolution 33-2025 is approved.
Thank you. New business, item number two.
Resolution 34-2025, a resolution accepting program funding from the America 250 Ohio Commission for the Ohio Goes to the Movies Project.
Thank you. Mayor Kearns.
Yeah, this is a $3,500 grant to offset the cost of a movie. For, we're doing, just to remind the group, we're doing a year-long celebration of the 250th year, and I'm not, it's not sesquicentennial, and I'm not going to get it right, but you get the idea. The movie at the park, or the movie, I think at the pool, is what this will be used for, and we're very grateful for the opportunity to recover those costs.
And let's just review, on the approved list of movies we could preview, what movie did we pick?
National Blue's Christmas Vacation.
Yeah. All right, for Christmas in July? Yeah, that'll be great. Wonderful. Is there a discussion? Motion?
Not, not a motion.
Director Kuzam.
I think the connection there is that Beverly D'Angelo is from Columbus, Ohio.
Oh, all right. Here we go.
Upper Arlington.
Okay.
All right, we got to find someone to be, become famous so we can show their movie. Anyways, motion?
Move to approve.
That's a motion by Councilmember Weiss. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Houston. Clerk, please call the roll.
Smith?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Houston?
Yes.
Kozak?
Yes.
Panzer?
Yes.
President Keeler?
Yes.
Resolution 34-2025 is approved.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, item number four.
Resolution 36-2025, a resolution to certify to the Franklin County Auditor and Treasurer a list of properties to be assessed for the cost of 2025 sidewalk improvements advanced by the City of Grandview Heights, Ohio.
Thank you. Mayor Kearns.
You'll recall that we had some ordinances that were passed earlier in the year. Our ordinances make sidewalk maintenance the property owner's responsibility. We do cost share in several ways. This pertains to the project work that we do. We went through and did a citywide assessment, just a review, maybe two years ago now at this point. Then we identified an area that was in the program, and sidewalk panels to be assessed. We gave residents and property owners the opportunity to participate. We did the work. All the notices were given. Opportunity for appeal was given. No appeals were made, and this is really just the final step in the process to allow the city to assess taxes, to recover the costs. And again, the pricing was, well, I guess I can't say it was favorable, because I didn't go and bid it myself, I didn't do that research, but it was a volume-type pricing that was done through the city, street and sidewalk program contract.
Great, thank you. And on timing, that needs to be passed this evening in order to get in on time for early 2026.
That's right.
Thank you. Is there discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozak?
Points, thank you. And there was, there were appeals, and I do know that they did take a few addresses off the list. And then, also, a couple of weeks ago, I happened to notice on Thomas, one of the addresses here, 832 Thomas, there were three panels marked with a single dot, and the panels didn't appear to have any issues, so I reached out to Director Hughes and copy Director Maxwell to ask if he knew what was happening there. And I also noticed that that house, the people who own it get the homestead credit, meaning elderly or lower income, so I was asking if he could please maybe not make them pay for that. But he went and looked at them, and he said that the grass growing up on the edge causes water to pool, and then that was the reason that they had been tagged. So, while there was nothing wrong with the panels, I think that's an engineering method in terms of how they're assessing the panels, so he took that address off the list, so they did not replace the panels, because there was nothing wrong with them. And he talked with the son of the owner, and they promised that they would address the trimming and keep the edging there. And I do know of another address on our street, a similar situation, where there were shrubs growing out onto the sidewalk. They appealed, and then he said, Director Hughes had told them, if you just get the shrubs cut back, so they're not hanging onto the sidewalk, then we'll remove you from the list. So, I know of a couple of situations like this. So, I wanted to see if we could then, the 832, they'd never had that work done, so they're still on this list, and I just saw it right before, about an hour before the meeting, and I had sent an email regarding that, so if we could have them removed from the list. And then I went and looked at all the addresses, and I found three others that get the homestead credit, and two of them are on the list tonight. One of them is 784 Gladman, and that was an amount of $808, and the other one is 951 Northwest Boulevard, and that was $404. So, for sure, the 832 Thomas needs to be removed, because those panels were never removed. They shouldn't be charged anything. And then the second part is, I would like to make a motion to.
All right, let's address the first part first. Director Maxwell, can you speak to those properties?
Sure. The Thomas one, Councilperson Kozak's correct. An email did come through. Director Hughes reviewed it and determined that it did not need to be replaced, so that can effectively come off the list.
Okay. Do we need to officially remove that from the legislation?
I would just do an amendment for purposes of tonight.
All right, that's a motion to amend to remove, was it 832?
832.
832 Thomas Road, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kozak. Clerk, please call the roll on amendment.
Walker?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Houston?
Yes.
Kozak?
Yes.
Panzer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
President Keeler?
Yes.
The amendment to 36-2025 is approved.
Thank you.
Madam President, may I address the appeals comment?
Sorry, I had something on the side. Was.
I'm sorry, I was just saying, did you get the address for that, Mary? 832?
832 Thomas.
Thanks, sorry.
Yes, Mayor Kearns, if you'd like to address the appeals process.
I think we're talking about two different things. There was an administrative review process that was informal, that was contact the Director of Service, meet him with the engineer out there and review, and you're absolutely right. Several people did that. There was also a formal appeal process. Nobody took a formal appeal by July 1st, so that, to clarify that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then your second portion, Councilmember Kozak.
The second portion, I would like to make a motion to remove, due to them having the homestead credit, two addresses on this list. The first one is 951 Northwest Boulevard for $404, and the second one is 784 Gladen for $808. There is a third address. for eight-hundred-and-eight dollars. There is a third address, and I had put that in the email. They're not on this list. I don't know if they requested a review and were removed, or if they already had paid, but there was a fourth address that gets the homestead credit, and that could be looked at later. But for tonight, those two that I just, uh, mentioned, I would move that we remove those from the list, thereby the city paying for that twelve-hundred dollars instead of, uh, asking the residents to pay that.
Is there a way, Director Miller, to verify those residents this evening?
I, I would- I would suggest that, I'm Councilperson Kozak's in check, but I would, I would, um, recommend that staff follow up and take the time to do a thorough review, just to make sure we're not, if council makes this policy decision, that's ultimately your call. But if, if so, we would want to verify and make sure there's no one on the list that qualifies before removing them from the program.
Thank you. Um, I'll open this item up for debate.
I think-
Yes, Councilmember Weiss.
In good spirit, I would want to make sure that we do a thorough review of this, though, to assess the financial impact on the city as a whole, for how many homes or properties that could be, uh, under the homestead credit. I wanna make sure that we're not getting ourselves into, like, this is just one portion of it. Um, I would want to see a potential calculation of that before we make any decisions. Um, if it's something that the city can afford and support, then I, I think that we should do that, but I would wanna look and see, you know, if there's a way to do an audit of the residences at Citywide that fall under the homestead credit. I wanna make sure that those are accurately, you know, as best to our ability that we can, that those homes are qualified for that and receiving it properly.
I can do an export of all the parcels in the city, and the county auditor flags all of them that get the homestead exemption. So, yes, that is pretty simple to do, not while I'm sitting here, but-
Right, right. And, and that's sort of my point, is that I think that's, I think that's something we could bring up as-
So, so this is a policy change, and, and it would be, we, it might just be for this year, um, but by doing it this year, you'd be doing it for all future years, or future councils would get grilled by those who don't receive that exemption, and that might be a change that we could make permanently, once we address it. Um, I do believe we are looking at capitals in the new year, um, and this could be something that we discuss in our council retreat for looking at capitals. Uh, we are at the end of this process, um-
Madam President?
Yes, yes, Councilmember Panzera.
This is deeply, uh, engaging into policy, and the, uh, the, the simple criteria that one has a homestead exemption on their property taxes is not reflective of their income in any way.
Right.
So there are plenty of people who have, uh, income challenges who are not on homestead exemption, um, and they are being held fully responsible. So, this is a lot more complicated than a single instance or a single complaint, and really needs to be addressed in a more comprehensive, uh, approach, rather than these small exceptions that are being drawn out this evening. Um, I was supportive of the address that you indicated, because it looks like that was in part due to error, but this is something that needs a lot more deliberation than to just simply, um, bring this up, and if it's going to be income-based, then that needs to be part of the policy structure. And I won't be here for you guys to figure that out, but this needs to be stated. You can't go through on a case-by-case basis and establish policy ad hoc as to whether or not someone is enjoying a homestead exemption. It has nothing to do with their income.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Uh, clarifying question, was this in the, is this in the ordinance? I, I don't recall this.
It's not. I have, it would require an amendment to the ordinance.
And this, and it's just something I hadn't thought of earlier in the year when I was bringing up, that I think that the city should pay because sidewalks are a public benefit. This is a whole other discussion that we don't have time for here, but I still will hold to that, and I was gonna reach out to Director Maxwell because I believe Westerville recently made a change, um, that they do allow for that, and they pay for their, uh, they don't make the residents pay. The city pays for the sidewalk replacement, and on the website, I believe there's even a line that says, "But this could be repealed at any time, given budget, um, constraints. We could reverse this," but they currently do that, and they have a nice program where they, um, allow you to report, uh, issues, so that you could actually fix, um, things needing immediate repair, unlike what we're doing now.
I, yeah, I think that, we all agree that the, our, I, I agree. I think we all, um, could make this process a little simpler, and it's something that I believe administration has been looking at to make it a little simpler, um, so everyone does not dread this process, but, um, I, I do think it is creating policy ad hoc, like I said, and that does, uh, doesn't seem like a very fair way to me to govern, um, to make sure that we're targeting the residents we need to target, we're making it fair for everyone, we don't miss someone, um, and we're fully understanding that the costs, um, that we would be incurring to make sure that we're not overextending our budget. And, and again, that's something we can look at, um, but yeah, but there was a, a motion. Is there any other further discussion from Councilmember Houston or Councilmember Walker? Yeah?
I, I had a clarifying question, um, maybe if Director Miller knows about this homestead program. Um, I am reading on the Franklin County Auditor site that your total income can't exceed forty thousand dollars.
Sure.
Is that wrong?
No, I understand, but that-
Okay, I must have misheard what you said.
It, it's not completely indicative of one's income as to whether or not they are on the homestead exemption. They have to apply for it. They have to be aware of it. They have to pursue a process to receive it, and there are plenty of people that are income-challenged who don't have that privilege, so using that as a single criteria, I think is, is not- It's, it's, again, I agree, in spirit, I, I mean, I would engage that that's, you know, a good way to approach it. One final comment, because you guys are gonna have to sort this out on your own. When we talk about things that the city pays for, those dollars come from our taxpayers. They're not exempt from paying for something because the city pays for it. In fact, they're wholly responsible for paying for it because it comes from our budget, which they provide for. If the Finance Department and future leadership would like to, uh, pursue a very, um, planned exercise of what those costs would look like throughout the city, rather than on, again, on a piece-by-piece basis, I think that's a much wiser way to proceed. Um, my guess is that that would very much escalate and advance the number of, uh, requests for replacement, and those would have to be substantiated through a bond issue, or some type of levy applied to the, uh, to, to the residents, or put forth before the residents. And in a way, that's equally imbalanced and equally unfair, because then neighbor A gets to pay for neighbor B's deteriorated sidewalk when neighbor A has already satisfied their requirements. So this is not as simple as a piece-by-piece, case-by-case visual examination, and whether or not someone has income or doesn't have income. It's either gonna be a program that the city continues with slight modifications, or as it is presently, or it's gonna probably end up before the voters to approve a levy that says, "We're gonna take care of all of it." And then that brings on the complexity of how do we handle multi-unit properties, condo buildings, condo properties, commercial properties, mixed use, et cetera. This is not ill-thought, the way that it's handled right now. It's actually exceptionally fair when you consider all components of this topic.
Great, thank you. Uh, we still have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
It's a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Weiss?
No.
Houston?
Wait, are we voting on?
Yeah, what?
Yeah, is the motion on?
The motion on the two addresses? It's on Michelle's motion to remove the, uh, addresses as stated.
Technically, point of order is an amendment to this.
Correct, it's an amendment.
To amend.
Okay, still no. A point of order, what, what had we, um, voted on previously?
Eight-thirty-two Thomas Amendment.
Okay, and that was approved.
Correct, so, um, sorry, we're just waving to, uh, the teacher's walking by. Uh, yes. Anyways, uh, Councilmember Kozak, if you could repeat the address numbers.
It's nine-fifty-one Northwest Boulevard and, um, seven-eighty-four Gladen.
Thank you.
And who made the motions?
Uh, Councilmember Kozak made a motion. Councilmember Houston's, Houston seconded on the amendment for those addresses just stated.
Okay. Uh, Weiss?
No.
Houston?
Yes.
Kozak?
Yes.
Panzera?
No.
Smith?
No.
Walker?
No.
President Keeler?
No.
Uh, the amendment is not approved.
Madam President?
Yes.
Back on-
Sorry, Mayor Kearns, sorry.
Uh, back on the original question about, there was one mistake, uh, I'm gonna commit, that we will double-check and make sure there's not others, um, and that if we find any, then we will not assess those, and we'll, we'll come back to you with a corrective, um, statement.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes. Councilmember Houston?
Could we, um, also just maybe explore, I know we're not, you know, not moving in this direction, but if we could explore, or at least have the data on the number of households that have the homestead credit.
Yes, I, I believe we already stated that we're looking at capital improvements in the new year, and I will also assign it to Planning Administration. All right, moving back to the original resolution on the floor, well, I guess it's as amended minus the one address for the First Amendment. Um, is there any further discussion?
Move to approve as amended.
Thank you. That's a motion to approve as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Weiss. Clerk, please call the roll.
Houston?
Yes.
Kozak?
Yes.
Panzera?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
President Keeler?
Yes.
Uh, resolution thirty-six dash twenty-two-five approved as amended.
Thank you. Moving on to new-
If I could make one just small remark, um-
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Peters, you'll just need to substitute the exhibit that's attached to the resolution before it goes to the county.
Thank you for clarifying that. New business, item number five.
Ordinance twenty-two-five dash ten, an ordinance to make annual appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Grandview Heights, State of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six.
Thank you. Mayor Kearns, Director Miller, the budget.
Thank you. I have a, like, five, six-slide presentation. I'll wait for, uh, the clerk to queue that up. Um, my comments will be very, um, high-level and, I guess, philosophical, and you hear me wax poetic every once in a while. This is one of those days. Uh, first of all, I wanna thank you, uh, or wanna thank the directors, um, the leadership of the city administration, um, particularly Finance and Director of Administration, who head up this process, and then all of our department heads, who are extremely diligent and thoughtful about their department's needs, and also very patient with understanding that their department is not the only department in the city, and that things have to be balanced. So, uh, thanks for, uh, a very good process, and if you can advance to the next slide. We're, we're actually in a new era. It's a new day in Grandview. I never thought this day would come. All of our core facilities are less than a decade old. In fact, several much newer than that. Um, that is another thank you to, uh, current and former leadership of the city, and to the voters. Um, the, the city leaders having the, the foresight to plan for this, and to really take one for the team twice in the past, and to really persevere through some very difficult times, yet still saving money, um, and looking to the future and understanding this, um, that we, we don't really survive without, if we can't really build our own home to house our people who provide the services every day. So, I, I'm really thrilled this is done, um, and I think it represents a philosophical shift for us in, in terms of all of our facilities, and really all of our parks, uh, all the improvements, and the, the facilities are in very good shape. And so we don't have to, uh, we can really put those kind of in a maintenance bucket now, and, um, focus our attention on other things. And if you can advance to the next slide, um, this is really just a high level of what, what I see and what the, the leadership team sees uh, as the priorities and the issues for the city in twenty-twenty-six. Um, this isn't really about appropriations in the budget so much, it's about what are the priorities? And in fact, the first two are the two I'm gonna talk about, uh, the most here, and those are not really appropriated in large amount or at all, and the, the, um, case of Parks Master Planning. What we brought you was an infrastructure and capital budget that's pretty scaled back, um, because, uh, we wanted to have a broader strategic discussion. So more on that in a moment. Um, more on Parks Master Planning. Director Patterson, thank you for giving high level on that. Um, the third box is really, uh, you know, you've been through the hundred-and-thirty-page document, maybe you haven't made it all the way through, but, uh, you'll see some of the, I would say, slight, um, changes and improvements that came from an organizational staffing and service gap analysis that Director Maxwell did in conjunction with the team, um, but really took the lead on. Um, so you'll see those in there. I'm not getting into details of that today. Uh, and then the other two kind of on our mind issues are, of course, the, the property tax and municipal income tax reforms and challenges and threats that exist, and again, I wanna thank those leaders, um, with us today that have spent time and energy, um, advocating for local government with our partners at the State House. Um, these are serious challenges. Uh, we have both at the same time right now, but it's usually, um, in my time at least, it's usually been municipal income tax. So we're getting it from all angles. Um, it is our hope and wish that our, our partners at the state level, uh, will understand that, that, that they are part of the solution, and that local government cannot, um, solve this on our own. If you can advance to the next slide, um, I wanna talk just a few words about infrastructure funding and strategic planning. Again, there's really not much of a capital budget this year. It's really essential things that are time-sensitive, uh, rolling stock, and basically a million-dollar-street program. Uh, we are in a great position, and we've never been in this position before, um, that we can kind of step back and have a strategic discussion. We, we have, you know, if, if you pass the budget as it is right now, we still have millions of dollars in the general fund as a starting point, and a triple-A rating, and, um, we've been working with Farris for the last year on a, um, uh, moving towards a, an infrastructure plan that's very detailed. It will provide, um, you know, we'll, we'll give you all time to digest it before we meet, uh, but it, it will provide, I think, an overview. The city's got a lot of needs, and infrastructure's a little more forgiving than buildings. You know, if the roof's leaking, you've gotta fix it to, to function. Uh, with infrastructure, you know, you, you can kick things down the road, and, and of course, the city did for many years. We've got a lot of deferred maintenance, millions of dollars of deferred maintenance. It's also our biggest, uh, fiscal responsibility. It, it's really the biggest public asset we have is our infrastructure, millions of dollars, um, much more than what we would, uh, I guess, how you would value our facilities. Um, so, I, I'm excited to look at it. I don't think you can do, can work in city government too long without kind of developing some sort of passion for infrastructure. Uh, I hope that you all have, or will. Um, much of our infrastructure has exceeded its design life. Uh, we're a hundred-year-old community. Um, those pipes are not getting any younger, and they are, um, when we do paving, you know, we do that paving every year, but that in a way is sort of deferred maintenance, because we're really not addressing the underlying problem. We're, we're giving ourselves a few more years of the road, but we haven't addressed what's underneath it, and that's really the, um, kind of the, one of the big challenges we have. So, again, excited about this. Uh, we intend to meet kind of on the, the council, um, retreat schedule. For those of you that have been around for a while, we, we do a retreat generally after an election in the first quarter, and I, we're looking at late February this year, depending on scheduling. Um, we will have our engineering partners there, and like I said, we'll give you some time to digest. It may take a couple sessions in the end, uh, but we really wanna get to prioritization of where we put our dollars. Um, you know, this council can't bind all future councils, but, but you can kind of set direction and set out a plan, and our hope is that with a ten-year infrastructure plan, you know, the plan can be evaluated and, and changed every year, but it at least set out philosophically where we're going, and so this is a, this is the intent here. Next slide, last slide, is just Parks Master Planning, and again, Director Patterson, thank you for queuing that up. Uh, very proud that when we had a two- Very proud that when we had a 2007 Parks Master Plan, there was no path forward and suddenly, somehow, we found a path forward to funding all of it in terms of all the improvements, and they're actually in great shape. So that's again, thank you to the leadership on that, thanks to the public for your support on that. We want, want to hear from the public, want some engagement in that process. You heard about the schedule for that. January, probably selection will occur, and again, there is no appropriation, we don't know what the appropriation will be. We're, we're confident, there's plenty of cushion in the general fund to, to, to fund this planning process, and we're committed to doing that. But we'll be back in a couple months with more information on that. And again, that will align pretty well with our intent with the infrastructure planning. So obviously, the future of 1016 Grandview Avenue, hot topic out in the community, no obvious direction that's going. And so this is really the first step to look at all the opportunities and, you know, in the context of the whole master plan, you know, there's some multi-use trail opportunities, there's the Linkus projects, there's, several new parks are online since we, it's actually remarkable how many new parks we have since we did the last master plan. So look forward to it all. Nuts and bolts of the budget, I think our preference would be if you have questions, when you have questions, I'm sure you will, to, if you could, you know, if we could have a list in advance of the next meeting, I think that would be extremely helpful. Believe that the Finance Chair intends to have a meeting at 6:00 PM on the 24th, 29th, whatever the date is.
24th.
24th? That's my presentation.
Great, thank you very much. I guess we'll get right down to it. Director Miller, would you like to walk us through anything or?
I wasn't planning on it.
Are we going to do that at committee?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Very good. Well, we do have both committee meetings scheduled at this time, the 24th and December 1st, correct?
Yeah, if I could say something on that real quick. So basically, two things. Then think, I know we, I think I said something different the last meeting, but what I'd like to do is 6 o'clock on the 24th, 6 o'clock on the 1st, what we could do is primarily the operating budget, first meeting, any carryover on December 1st, 6 o'clock, as well as the capitals. And if need be, during the meeting, as it comes up on the agenda, just like now, for third reading, we could have more discussion if we haven't finished everything.
Very good.
And also, if there are questions, and again, the first committee meeting will be the 24th, so if there's any questions from anybody, send it to myself or Director Miller via email.
Thank you. Are there any questions at this time? Councilmember Houston?
Just want to clarify that the council meeting in December is on the 8th, but Finance is on the 1st, is that correct?
So we will get to that in comments of council members. We'll stick with this at this point. I have a thought and suggestion that we will get to at comments.
Stay tuned.
Stay tuned. You beat me to the punch, all right. So, all right. Anything else? All right, well, we will record that as a first reading. New business, item number six.
Ordinance 2025-11, in ordinance to make appropriations to various departments within the City of Grandview Heights Municipal Government to purchase equipment and make capital improvements in 2026.
Thank you. Once again, that's everything we just talked about, and with the caveat that we are looking at a more robust discussion on capitals in the new year, but this is for immediate needs on a timing, on a, that are on a timeline, that are being discussed in this ordinance. Any discussion on capitals at this time? No? All right, we will record that as a first reading. New business, item number seven.
Ordinance 2025-12, in ordinance to update the terms and conditions of employment for employees of the City of Grandview Heights, not covered by collective bargaining for 2026.
Thank you. Mayor Kerns?
This is the salary ordinance. I'll defer to the director on the changes that are requested.
Thank you, Mayor Kerns. So in, in the mayor's report on the budget, she indicated a staffing analysis had been performed, and as a result of that, there's a couple of titles that were proposing be included in the budget, and the salary ordinance does not include those titles, so that they're included here for your consideration. This is running for first reading tonight throughout the budget process. If those positions would stay in through the budget process, then the third reading would align with the passage of the appropriation ordinance. If for whatever reason you decided not to pursue those positions, they could be dropped out at second or third reading, but, so that they're in alignment right now, the titles are included here for your consideration.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions? No? All right, I will assign that to Finance, record that as a first reading. I forgot to officially assign both 2025-10 and 2025-11 to Finance as well. No surprise there, but just making sure it's officially on the record. Other business, I don't believe we have any permits or anything. Next comments from council members. So getting back to the dates, we are looking at the, the dates of the meetings and for the Finance meeting on December 1st, we're kind of all going to be here anyways. Actually, we won't be here, we'll be at the new building. How exciting is that? But, so I was going to suggest that we move the 15th to the 1st and have that be the first meeting with 8th as backup if, if needed, just to make sure that we're making the best use of everyone's time, so that you have one less evening that you need to come in and we can get these things taken, or taken care of before the end of the year. Is there any discussion on that date change? I'd move to change the date from December 15th to December 1st.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Smith. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, so our regular meeting will be December 1st, special meeting will be December 8th if needed. Comments from council members, any comments? Councilmember Kozak?
I did have a follow-up on the sidewalk topic regarding that we would need a levy. We already have appropriated in the budget $100,000 a year for the sidewalk work, and so it's prepaid, it's pre-allocated, it's there. We wouldn't be needing, looking for extra money. I've had a discussion with Director Hughes, I asked a while back how much of that he had received in, it was maybe 16,000 of people paying, paying for that upfront instead of having it put on their property taxes. And I think he was working on preparing some other data, so just so we know how much of that in the list tonight, I don't know that there was a total on that, but how much of it's going on the property tax bill, just to get an idea of what is it we're giving up. If it's, you know, that's trickling in, does that money go back into the general fund? Just these kinds of questions, that it is pre-allocated, so I just wanted to state that because you had mentioned the levy.
I did mention levy and.
Just to clarify, that $100,000 does include the tree, the ones that are damaged by the tree or that sort of thing, correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
And that $100,000 is based upon this present program's results. So what I'm trying to potentially address is that that is not a perpetual number and it can't be relied upon. It doesn't address anything as far as new builds, it doesn't address anything in the realm of additional deferred maintenance that people will begin to exercise. They'll ignore it, knowing that the city is going to replace it. So it has its own detrimental long-term effects, and it cannot be calculated on a, on a annual basis. It's something that has to be addressed over the entire course of the city, all of the miles of sidewalks that exist, what the expected lifespan is of those sidewalks, and then it can become a program. And I'm sure that that would be much more costly than $100,000 a year. So we don't know the numbers, but to, to, again, to take one tiny sampling and say, well, this is all it is, is not the correct way to address it, in my view.
Well, what I was looking at how we're doing.
Councilmember Kozak?
Thank you. The way it's set up now, that you just then don't, you do the same process we have now, but you're not making the residents pay for it. So that's, they went and assessed two years ago, all the sidewalks in the community, they have a plan for how they're going to work through that, and then instead of the residents paying for it, that was the idea. But Bexley has passed this, Dublin and Westerville, one in 2019, 2021, 2023, so there's learnings to be had from those communities, just putting that out there for further discussion.
Thank you. This is a great policy question that we can review in the new year when we're reviewing the capital budget. So thank you for bringing that up.
Council President.
Uh, Councilmember Smith, yes.
My comment would be similar to, I think, what Councilmember Weiss was saying at the very beginning. I think, I, I mean, again, this exemption that we're talking about here with the homestead, that was not, that's not in our ordinance, and I think it was kind of like backdoor legislation, we were kind of ad hoc doing, and I, I mean, if you want to bring that up and eventually, you know, bring up the discussion of amending our ordinance to create that, you know, exemption for those homes, that's one thing, but I don't think it's fair or correct to, you know, ad hoc, kind of backdoor legislation like that was attempted to do.
Thank you. We've heard from lots of folks, Councilmember Weiss, Councilmember Houston, Councilmember Walker. Any thoughts? Yes, Councilmember Houston?
I wanted to clarify for the ribbon cutting events.
Yes.
The time that we should be at the new city hall by 3:30 is sufficient for the group photo?
Yeah, the group photo's at 3:30, and then the actual event starts at 4:00.
Okay, great. Is there a length of time that we should plan to, just knowing there's a Start Talking Grandview event at the library as well?
Yeah, that's a good question. I, I would say the first hour with the, the presentation of the program, the dignitaries being present, and I would think by 5, by 15-ish, that will wrap up, and then it will truly turn into the open house where people can navigate and walk around in their own.
Okay, thank you. Helpful.
All right, so we all got to walk up the hill afterwards, so. All right, any other thoughts, comments? Councilmember Weiss?
I did just want to acknowledge all present, soon-to-be-future council persons on their campaigns. I know everybody worked really hard and knocked on a lot of doors, and I just wanted to acknowledge it.
Thank you, yes, everyone worked hard and we appreciate that. We've all been through it, so we all know it's not an easy feat to run a campaign. So congratulations to every single person who ran. So the only thing I would like to add is thank you to our veterans. We appreciate every single one of you and those currently serving. You do a lot to help protect our country and our state and our community, and so thank you to that, and we'll remember you all tomorrow on Veterans Day. All right, anything else? Okay, with that, we are adjourned. Oh, sorry, we are not adjourned, I take that back. I just got real excited there. You all are adjourned. We are now have executive session pursuant to revised Code 121.22G4, preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment. Is there a motion to enter executive session?
So much. Yes.
That's a motion by Councilmember Smith, and was that a second by Councilmember Panzera? Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll on executive session.
Houston?
Yes.
Kozak?
Yes.
Panzera?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
President Keeler?
Yes.
Motion is approved to move into executive session.
Thank you, and I would ask the.
We're going to adjourn to the front conference room for the executive session, I can lead you up there when you're ready.
I don't know where that's at, but first I'd like to call you and Director Miller and Mayor Kerns and Director Sam, as well as the chief. No, chief.
Yes.
Yes, and the chief, into executive session, and we will, I don't know where that conference room is, so we'll just follow you.